I'll be meeting Monday, April 27th, 2020. Board of County Commissioners to order. Before we get started, I'll set up what their role call. Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Menon Hall.
Here.
And this is Chairman Nickleston. We also have our county manager, Mr. Oakley, and the board, Ms. Shannon Shaver. I believe we also have Mr. Tyler Bradler, is that correct?
Here, yes, I'm here.
Thank you, sir. As always, without any invocation, Commissioner Walker, if you wouldn't mind leading us, please.
It's my privilege, Mr. Chairman. Father, we thank you that we can come together and attend to the county's business and honor the trust and confidence that our citizens have placed in us by allowing us to be doing what we're doing. As always, thank you for our many blessings. We're blessed in many ways. Lord, even the challenges we face, we learn from them and eventually some good may come from them, hopefully it will. We ask for your direction and guidance and a generous blessing of common sense and reason on us during this strange or odd time, a strange situation we're facing. We know that you're still in control and nothing happens in this world that's beyond our ability or beyond your power to deal with. We ask your help for those who are directly affected by the virus. There's many throughout our nation who are sick and some have died. We ask that you be with the families and be with the people that need your help most during these times. We ask that you be with all of us and just help us do the things in a way you'd have us do and be the kind of people that you'd have us be as we go through this situation. We ask that you be with us during our meeting and guide us and direct us and help everything go according to your will. And we again thank you for our blessings, thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, our Savior, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Continue standing for a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever new. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
This is Ronnie Menon Hall. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second Jimmy Walker.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right. Now move on to our comments for commissioners and managers. Commissioner Menon Hall, if you'd like to go first, sir.
Thank you. I will not take but a brief moment just to welcome everyone that is listening in tonight to our commissioners' meeting. I hope that everything is going well with each and every one of our citizens here in Stokes County. My best wishes to all of you and thank you for participating in our county government tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Walker?
Yes, I'd also like to welcome all who may be listening. Glad that people are involved with our county government that are interested. I'll not say a lot because I don't want to run our phone batteries down. As long to the next commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a prepared statement, but I'll read it very quickly and it's only one page, so. I am extremely disappointed with Governor Cooper's decision to extend the stay-at-home order passed May 1st to May 8th. I'm fearful that North Carolina is going to drag out its reopening process through the whole summer. I can somewhat understand the urgency by the federal government of shutting down because of the unknowns associated with the COVID-19 virus, but that decision was based on a group of predictive models that have now been proven wrong. We now have actual data that proves these models were wrong, yet there seems to be no sign of the urgency when it comes to opening the economy back up. Risk models being used by politicians and their medical advisors to reopen the economy seem to place all the risk toward potential medical issues and ignore the risk associated with the economic factors that are wrecking businesses and individuals financially. These economic factors translate to negative health impacts on people that can easily exceed the negative health impacts by the COVID virus. Ironically, this continued shutdown could easily run hospitals out of business as they cancel all elective procedures to be prepared for non-existent COVID-19 patients. I really think we have reached the point where the cure has worsened the virus and the stay-at-home order is not even a real cure, which leads to my next concern. My next concern is that the government will try to do another shutdown and stay-at-home declaration if the COVID-19 virus comes back this fall and winter. Fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me. I hope everyone will start thinking about now, thinking now, about how we should resist being taken down this path again. Our citizens and their businesses will not survive another drill like this if they survive this one. I think the public has been hoodooed on this pandemic because the federal government's medical agencies were not prepared and reacted like this was the first pandemic the world had ever seen. Sometimes I wonder if the bureaucrats and politicians would be moving so slow to reopen the economy if their paychecks had gone to zero like so many citizens and businesses have. I also wonder if there is not a large anti-Trump, President Trump component, political component to many of these questionable decisions. I will save that discussion for another day. Our Board of Commissioners sent a letter to Governor Cooper requesting that decisions on reopening be delegated to the county level just as the federal government is supporting governors making local decisions on their individual states. As far as I know, we have received no response to that letter. Our vote with a statement from our United States Attorney General. Attorney General William Barr on Tuesday compared coronavirus shutdowns to house arrests and suggested that the Justice Department could take legal action against states for their restrictions. His comments came after President Trump has encouraged protesters to liberate certain states from the stay-at-home orders intended to slow the virus spread. "These are unprecedented burdens on our civil liberties right now," Barr said in an interview on the Hugh Hewitt Show. You know, the idea that you have to stay in your house is disturbingly close to house arrests. I'm not saying it wasn't justified. I'm not saying in some places it might still be justified, but it's very onerous as if shutting down your livelihood. Barr said that if citizens file lawsuits against their states over the orders, the Justice Department will take a look at it and take a position if it seems justified. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Just quickly, I want to know what Commissioner Morris said. We've had a Commissioner Menon Hall, myself, had had a meeting with Mr. Hall, Calhoun, state representative, and it sounded like our letter's not going to do anything with our Governor Cooper. It sounded like it's kind of following deaf ears. It sounded like he's going to kind of keep control of the state, not give us much authority at all to do anything. What we kind of see, and of course, you know, one thing I need people to understand is our intent behind this is saying, you know, Stokes County is not Wake County. There's a big difference in populations and difference in areas and all. I agree, if it was affecting their paycheck as well, I believe that you wouldn't see all this, but unfortunately, it's not. But with that, we'll move it on and pass it on to our county manager, Mr. Oakley.
Mr. Chairman, I hope everyone's doing well and staying safe and, yeah, my prayers, that's all I have.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the other.
Mr. Chairman, may I make, may I make a follow-up comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I thoroughly agree with Commissioner Morris's comments, as well as his comments from the previous meeting. He said what I would like to have said better than I could have said, and I'm proud of him for making the statements he made. They're very needed, they're very on target, and actually, it's better for him to make those comments than me because at this point, I actually have trouble talking about this situation without getting somewhat emotional. So, I'm proud of Commissioner Morris, thoroughly agree with his comments, and I hope someone, somewhere, who can start doing some things to move, move this situation more toward it being a thing of the past, I hope it starts happening, but I applaud him for his comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, the resignation of Commissioner. As you all know, Commissioner Yance has presented his resignation letter to the Board of Commissioners, and within a two-week period, he has decided to continue on with his resignation. And so with that, can I get a motion on that?
Reluctantly, I make the motion that we accept Commissioner Yance's resignation.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
I want to thank him for the time he did serve, and I thought he served the county well as a commissioner for the time he was with us.
I agree. It's a sad thing to lose him, but they understand, wish him the best of luck in the future. With that, we'll look at, let's see who we can give a replacement on that, so.
Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
The chairman.
Yes, sir.
I also, before we take the vote, would just like to say to him, Mr. Yance, my sincere thanks for his service over the years, but on the Board of Education and the county commissioners, and I appreciate everything he has done for the county. Thank you, sir.
I'll say wish you the best. Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, we'll go ahead and move it on to our public comments. I believe Ms. Shaver has some comments right there she wants to read.
I received public comments from two individuals for this meeting. I did the same thing I did for the last electronic meeting, which was proposed on the agenda that you submit those to me. And so I'm going to start with those. The first comments I received are from Susan Smith Gonzalez of 1001 North Main Street, Wannacote. Dear Commissioners, I strongly disagree with the letter that was sent to Governor Cooper by board members. I doubt Governor Cooper would consider making an exception for some counties and not others. It is a statewide guide and not meant to be a patchwork effort. Most of North Carolina is made of small counties, some are smaller and more remote than Stokes. If residents are allowed to open up, would they be allowed to travel to other nearby counties? Precy, Guilford, or I guess anywhere they wanted to go? That idea could endanger the lives of our neighboring counties and defeat the efforters trying to contain the spread of COVID-19. We have a few businesses in Wannacote open for curbside, and I thought that was a clever idea. The final comments I received were from Ann Nichols, 1145 Sandy Lane in Sandy, original Carolina. She's the branch manager of the King Public Library. I would like to thank the Stokes County Commissioners for allowing me to share these comments with you this evening. I realize you have a great task ahead of you. Rebuilding the Stokes County economy will take strength, collaboration, wisdom, and a great deal of patience. The Stokes County Public Library knows that we will have challenges being on the front lines assisting many Stokes County residents with job assistance. As you know, the King Public Library, in partnership with Precy Tech, has a job lab in the library to assist the unemployed with finding jobs. Before COVID-19, we had numerous successes and are now preparing to be ready for the oncoming wave of job seekers. All libraries in the Northwestern Regional Library System, including King, Wannacote, Danbury Public Libraries, will be attending virtual training on how to assist job seekers with preparing resumes, online applications, filing for unemployment, and much more. The training will be provided by Precy Tech and funded by the friends at the King Public Library. Precy Tech also recognizes that there will be a great need and have decided to increase our current job lab hours by adding four additional hours upon reopening of the library. Currently, all the libraries in the Northwestern Regional Library System are offering many online resources, including eBooks and e-audio books, and many free online databases such as ancestry.com, NC Live, and much more. We are offering temporary access numbers to those who wish to access these digital resources and do not have a library card at this time. We are purchasing new eBooks to add to our online collection, including new juvenile nonfiction eBooks, which will assist teachers, students, and their families. All of these resources can be found on our website, NWRL.org. Please know that we are aware of the challenges ahead of you. We want you to know that we will do everything we can to help. Thank you for your support and your funding, which helped make these services available. And that's all the public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Shaver. All right, with that, we'll move on to now to the consent agenda to have a motion on this.
This is Ronnie Menon Hall, I'll make a motion to approve.
Rick Morris, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oats? All right, with that, there's nothing on our information agenda, so we'll go straight to discussion agenda. Item A, the COVID-19 safety measures.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll take care of this for you. In this right here, we are, as of the emergency meeting that we held on March 25th, the board agreed to limit the public access to the county buildings, while still serving the public and ensure the state gets its employees. With that, the board agreed also at the next meeting to reevaluate how this, how this is going and if it needs to be extended. The current stay-at-home order by the governor will stay in effect until May 8th, with the state hopefully opening up by that time. The board discussed at the meeting of April 14th to agree to reevaluate at the next meeting. So with doing this one, we are having, I am, at this time, I am recommending that the Board of Commissioners reopen the government center offices to the public on May the 4th, Monday, and resume normal operations while still adhering to the governor's guidelines concerning the essential business practices related to the social distancing and mass gatherings. Also got with the Health Director to give me information concerning what it is and their approval. The emergency order that was made on March 18th will expire at the end of April the 30th, that the emergency director ordered, and we'll continue to follow the, we will continue to follow the governor's executive order number 135. This order has extended the stay-at-home to May 8th. In addition, there should be no more than 10 individuals in mass gathering, and there will be no visitation in long-term care facility in their, in their facility. The following is a link to the governors, and that will be posted on our website. The Health Director does agree with us opening up this, the government center here, as long as we follow the governor's orders of, of executive orders 135. And also Brandon Gentry, the emergency director and EMS director, has also said that he agrees with opening the county back up on the 4th. We were always a essential business, it's open, but this is something the commissioners moved forward at my request to make sure that if COVID did get out of hand, that we already had something in place. But it seems like everything is, is not quite as bad as everyone anticipated at the beginning, which is, thank God for that. But I do want people to be careful, wear their masks, their gloves, keep their distances, and if you are, are in any way, uh, immune to, or, or, or health, have health concerns, please stay at home, always look after yourself, and, and just, you know, if you feel like you're sick, go get checked out and, and, and do what needs to be done as far as what the president, the CDC, and our governor is asking for. But I think it's time to start looking to gradually open up this county and, and move forward with that. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and put forward comments. I'll start with Commissioner Walker.
I don't have much to say. I think, again, I'll refer back to Commissioner Morris's comments earlier in this meeting. Some new, things have changed a lot since March 25th. A lot of new information has surfaced, and I think our county manager was very on target, very astute in noting that this is really turning out to be a lot milder in some ways than anticipated, and I really think this is a move in the right direction. Our, our citizens at this point need some encouragement. They need to be seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, and Governor Cooper really is not helping that with being so hardline with counties like ours. And I think to have a plan in place where we're starting to move as a county toward opening some things back up is a big plus. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Morris? I'm fine with reopening on the 4th, that sounds like a good plan to me. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Menon Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly will say that with the approval of the county manager and the Health Director and the EMS Director, Brandon and Tammy and you, and I will certainly go along with your, all three of y'all's recommendation. So I'm, I'm all for reopening the government center on May 4th if the three of you feel comfortable, and it sounds like you do, so I'm, I'm behind it 100% then.
Thank you, sir. I agree as well. I started talking to Mr. Gentry, Tammy Martin, all didn't feel comfortable as well, so there's just too many people saying yes on it, and I fully agree, let's just go ahead and open it back up on May 4th, so. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item B, tax administration late listings due to COVID-19.
I'm a doubtful handler for Richard Ray, the tax administrator, but this is concerning, in your geniuses, that it's concerning a late listing, covering, and in his letter, he is stating the reason why that this needs to be extended, but Richard is requesting that the Board of Commissioners grant the tax office permission to accept personal listing forms, if applicable, to be extended to the deadline of July 15th, like the federal government did as far as your taxes are concerned. So, and this is all based on the COVID-19 reaction, so. And the state DOR, the Department of Revenue, is recommending that the, that the states allow this listing period to be extended, so. We've done a request that this will be moved to the, to the consent agenda on the next board meeting.
Okay. All right, with no comments, Commissioner Morris?
I'm good with it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Menon Hall?
I'm also good with this. I'm good with it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
It sounds good. Do we need to have a vote on this like action at the next meeting or something, or can we just give our concurrence?
Yeah, just consider it the next meeting.
Did you get that, Commissioner Walker?
Yes, I did. That's, that's fine with me.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. I'm good with this.
I am. Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
I was, the last item that you all did from the COVID-19, when you closed the, on March 25th, you had the emergency meeting. You did actually vote in that meeting to give the authority to the county manager to implement a policy for employees and the public enclosed to the public and then to reassess that. So you might want to consider just actually making a vote on this as well to give him the authority to reopen the government center on the 4th of May, just like, since it was voted on in action at the emergency meeting, just to cover that. Okay. Do you, Todd, do you think that, do you think that's okay?
It's probably covered in the initial action, but I think it'd be a good idea to put on the action.
Okay, so can we?
This is Ronnie Menon Hall, Dan, Shannon, I'll, I think that, well, we can, May the 4th, I go ahead and, I'd like to make a motion to move it from discussion tonight to action and be out of mouth on, on action tonight. I think we need to go ahead and make a vote on it tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, I just wanted to be sure, thank you.
Do I have consensus from the whole board to move that to action or not?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll now move on to item C, NCACC insurance renewal.
Mr. Chairman, this is a renewal of our Workman's Conversation and general liability of motor vehicles. And in that, you see a letter that, Linda Pruitt, our support service coordinator, sent to our clerk, and below, in that letter, you will see from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in Workman's Comp and General Liability for Motor Vehicles, you see the rates here from 2019 versus the 2020. It looks like we'll have a small increase of a little over $3,000, which is due to our liability on our property autos, and that's the cost, look at all the new cars we have. But it's not that big of an increase because you get two big discounts for being in a code and longevity credit. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that we, that we approve of continuing on with the services provided here and, with the exception of the risk management code, workers compensation, and, and the liability on our financials.
Okay, thank you, sir. All open comments with Commissioner Menon Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have looked over the numbers on this, and I'm good with this. I'd like to see it moved, moved to action at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you. I have a question for our manager, please.
Yes, sir.
Jake, I always think when we're presenting numbers like this that there's been due diligence, adequate research to be sure that we are, and I would figure that we probably are, still getting the best value for our money by going with NCACC for this coverage. Is that a, a good conclusion on my part, that we have data showing that this is still our best value?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Walker, that, that's definitely been done through, through Linda Pruitt, she handles all of the bidding process, and with this right here, the diligence that you're talking about has been, has been done.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, I'm good with the renewal.
I'm good with it as well. We'll go ahead and move on to item D, the meal and wheels contract renewal.
Mr. Chairman, you have a senior meal program that we always have with BS South LLC doing businesses, building ground, and they are requested to continue their service and along with senior services, because they've always worked with them very closely. And you're looking at your congress meals and home delivery, and the total cost for that, and this is to provide approximately 170 meals for approximately 245 days for elderly shut-ins. You also see ties, acceptance letter for the contract, you can use that contract that is stated below, so. But that, Mr. Chairman, I have a request that the board move forward with, approving the contract with BS South LLC doing business and building ground, as the cater, and there's no change needed in the month.
Thank you, sir. No comments with Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, sir. Sometimes we have multiple quotes for this particular item. I'm just seeing, unless I've overlooked something, I'm just seeing one for, for this particular cycle. It's encouraging that the price is not, doesn't seem to have increased, and also... Um, it's encouraging that the price is not, doesn't seem to have increased, and, uh, also I always have a question about the quality. Now, so far, from year to year, we've had positive feedback from our users regarding Golden Corral and services. They, they give them thumbs up, and I hope that's still true. Are we still getting a good level of, uh, user satisfaction with Golden, Golden Corral's meals?
Uh, yes, Mr. Walker. Uh, Mr. Walker, everybody is well satisfied with it. Vicky, our director, she's well pleased with, uh, with, uh, Golden Corral, and, and they did not go up on their price, and as far as I know, I don't think anyone else submitted on this, so, so with that, we was pleased to see them get back into their, their game, and, and we move forward with, uh, providing the meals for our, uh, elderly and children.
That was good. I'm on board.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morris?
Yes, I'm good to go with the renewal on that as well.
Okay. Commissioner Minnenhall?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm good to go.
Thank you, sir, and I'm good as well. We're on to item E, the Meadows Water Project Resolution.
Mr. Chairman, that and board members, this is a resolution attached to your review is related to the water project in Meadows area, L K C, along with the public work directors of Ma- uh, Mark Delahunt and myself, are, uh, in a project of you having a resolution so we can move forward with seeking, uh, funding. Uh, you got on here that it's the Stokes Danbury Meadows Water System in a connection with, uh, with this, if it, uh, the reason why Danbury's in there is to seek further help and zone and, and funding, and, uh, it's just, uh, it's a name only, but if we know sometime in the future that we may connect Danbury with this water source, then it would, uh, do greatly help with funding and grants, uh, through the state and, uh, the Appalachian area, uh, that, uh, that maybe a water tower or something would have, uh, have, uh, more money to, uh, to, uh, provide for the services that may be somewhere down the road later on, but, uh, uh, with that, uh, I'm asking that forward, we'll, uh, pass this resolution so we can move forward with funding and seeking funding through the, uh, pre-applications of, of grants through, uh, uh, through art. With that said?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Morris?
Yes, I think that's a good idea to do that, because, uh, the water quality up there, I think, is better than Danbury, and we may need to depend on it sometimes, so that's probably a good idea, I think.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Minnenhall?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm good with this. I, uh, I really like the idea of, uh, combining it with the Danbury situation. Any, anytime that we can utilize, uh, projects and combine them, and it can help us with grant funding, uh, I think we need to go in that direction, so I'm good with the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Just, uh, well, one question that comes to mind at this time is, there's been some talk, um, a little here and there, so to speak, about any chance of Walnut Cove being involved in any way with this type of project since it's located where it is. Um, kind of historically, the answer's been probably not, but I don't want to overlook an opportunity, if there's an opportunity there, to make this more of a regional water system by, uh, the interconnections. So I wonder if there's been any research, any further research in that direction?
That, uh, Commissioner Walker, is something that, uh, I submitted at the last, last year's budget as something that the commissioners can look into for future projects, and yes, there was a project from the, uh, Rocket Hamstein bringing water in to Walnut Cove from utilizing our river, and, uh, also there was a project of cost and design on, uh, running the water from connecting Meadows and to Walnut Cove, and there was also a design that would allow you to have sewer from Germantown into Walnut Cove, and there was also a design of running, uh, uh, sewer to the Pinnacle area. So all these are areas of high interest that the commissioners wanted to consider someday, hopefully, and, uh, with, uh, with that, I'll be more than happy to, uh, get with you and show you all of those proposals of cost projections, and that's basically where they were and what they are as of now, until let's, let's the board decide they want to move forward with some of these other projects.
Maybe this will be something we can just get an update, uh, on during our budget sessions for this year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, I have a problem with this as well. I'll say maybe even forward it. I'll move on to item F.
Action.
Okay. Um, all the commissioners found with moving this to action tonight on item B, the Meadows Water Project Resolution.
Is it?
I'm fine with it.
Is it urgent?
Yes.
Okay. On that basis, I'll give my concurrence.
And I'm good also with it.
Okay. I'm good with it as well. Well, it is item G on the action agenda. We'll now move on to item F, the proposed twenty 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 one budget schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, give you the answer. Uh, this is, uh, the dates and timeframes that I want the board to look at concerning a difficult budget that's coming up, and, uh, I'm, I'm prepared and with, along with Julie and Shannon and Lisa, and coming up with a, uh, proposed budget that I possibly can, and I hope to have this for you on May the eleventh. And, uh, with that, you'll see in your schedule, uh, in your budget here, the schedules that we have set aside, and I hope you'll look at it and see if these all work with you. So go ahead and plan for these things, uh, these to be like they are as far as March, uh, May the fourteenth and at three, May the twentieth at three, June the thirty two, June the fourth at three, with the June fourth meeting being reset if you feel like it was necessary to, uh, uh, reconvene on, uh, uh, further meetings on the budget. Also have May the twenty first would be the public hearing, and, uh, then you have, uh, May the, May the twenty eighth would be the three o'clock meeting, and that would be the joint meeting between, uh, uh, the Board of Education. That will be confirmed by them on this date and later date. It, okay, Shannon just told me that this meeting has been confirmed by the Board of Education on the twenty eighth. Okay. I would love the board to look at this and see if y'all don't have any conflicts with if we can move forward with it, then planning and working out a, uh, new budget for twenty twenty one.
Okay. I'll start with comments with, uh, Commissioner Minnenhall.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've looked over these, and I, you know, at this time, I do not see any conflicts for me, but, um, as you're aware, I made you aware, uh, my wife will be having surgery, um, elective surgery when they start allowing that, um, once, uh, Governor Cooper puts it back into place, elective surgeries, and, um, you know, so I have no idea when that is her surgery will be. It could be, you know, in one of these days or not, but, uh, so I'm gonna say I'm good with it. I, as the only thing I can do is say I'm good with it, and if something comes up with, uh, her surgery, I'll just have to give you a call, okay?
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Walker?
I'm okay for now.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, I'm good with all those dates, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir, and I'm good with these dates as well.
That's, okay. All right. We'll move on now to our action agenda. Item May, the YBDA employment request. I'll open the floor for any further nominations. Okay. Uh. Have a motion to close.
Hang on just a second, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to collect my thoughts. Um, now, am I recalling correctly that you expressed an interest in being on this board?
Yes, sir.
Have you been nominated?
Yes. Yeah, at the last meeting, I was nominated.
I just wanted to be sure that I moved that the nominations be closed.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'll now poll the board, start with Commissioner Morris.
Uh, Nicholson.
Commissioner Walker?
Same.
Commissioner Minnenhall?
Nicholson.
Uh, so Nicholson is with. All right, we'll move on with item B, the P T R C Work Development Board deployment request. I'll open the floor for any further nominations.
Move it to, uh, the nominations be closed.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right. In discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll now poll the board, start with Commissioner Morris.
Yeah, so Buckson was the one that was, uh, nominated. I go with Buckson.
Same.
Same.
Buckson's with. All right. Item C, the Friends of Stokes Shelter request to amend lease.
Move it, we approve.
All right. In discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item D, the F T C C Building and Construction Request, will consent to construct?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed. Commissioner Walker, did you say aye on that?
I did.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Now, on item E, the propane retrofit proposal, budget amendment number one hundred, uh, commissioners on this, it's been, uh, advised by you and the county here to maybe postpone this right here for right now, uh, to see what everything's gonna be lining up in our budget, what it's gonna be looking like, uh, maybe pick it up towards, uh, maybe in the fall or late summer, something like it right there. Um, I'm just gonna ask you guys how y'all want to proceed with it. Do y'all wish to delay this, or do y'all want to move forward with it? And with that, what I'm seeing is also, uh, there's not much cost savings in it right now with the gas, now that's the price that it is. Um, we'd also had discussion with the whole chair, and the, the sales tax is down and everything else, so, uh, kind of my thought on it, I kind of like to see it moved for right now, just to see how things is gonna go, but, uh, I'll start with Commissioner Minnenhall and get your thoughts on that as well.
I certainly, uh, can go along with your, uh, proposal, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, we need to postpone this a little bit later in, uh, fiscal year or the budget cycle to see how things are looking. I'm good with that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you. Um, do we have any money in this, in our, uh, budget for this year for, for this type of project?
No, this is, this is a budget amendment that was done on it.
Okay, then I think it needs to compete with all the other needs that we're going to have in our upcoming budget. Um, that's about as fair as I think we can be at this point. Um, we really don't know, I think we're beginning to get some idea of how big a hit we're going to take financially as a county with all that's going on the way it is, but I don't think we're even sure yet the extent of what we're gonna be dealing with, so I'm, I'm on board for postponing it.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Morris?
I like to look at it in the budget discussions when we have it. Uh, I'm kind of hesitant to postpone it because it's a way of saving money. It's not as much as we thought, but I like to relook those numbers and projections and everything, but, but, uh, and still do it if we possibly can, so I don't think it's that big of a budget impact to it, but, um, I'm fine with looking at it during the budget process.
Okay.
I'd like to add a comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, sir.
Um, one thing that I think puts a higher priority on this particular project is this, this is somewhat of a prototype project, uh, potentially the same as could be beyond what we're looking at with this particular group of vehicles. Uh, so I, I, even though we're postponing it, uh, to the upcoming budget cycle, uh, I, I still have a high priority for this project.
Yeah, I agree. It's just, uh, right now with the, looking at this, with the stuff that's coming up, and of course, our budget's gonna be way unknown, and we don't know what we're gonna face. Uh, of course, right now, the cost savings is not there, and I know gas will eventually go back up, and that's when you're really gonna reap the benefits off of it, but, uh, also these vehicles are, are supposed to be into the rotation of the lease, and I think three more years, is that correct? So it's, it's kind of one of them, but now, let's just kind of, I'm kind of looking at it like this, let's just kind of see where we stand after we get into this budget cycle. If it's something that we can say we can work it in, great, if not, maybe look at it at a later time, but, uh, I mean, of course, anything that can save money, I'm all for, but right now, I'm just kind of seeing it, it's not that much benefit, because you're talking about maybe four cents a gallon difference, um, and it would take a long, long time to, to make up the, what's it, eight thousand or six thousand some dollars per vehicle. Uh, so it's kind of where I was looking at it right now, and like I said, I hope we can reap this here soon. I hope the impact is not as bad as we think it's gonna be, but the only time we'll take. But, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, item F. What's the item, what's the name of that, I'm sorry?
It's COVID nineteen, just to give approval, so reopen that government center. Obviously, since it's been closed on May the fourth.
Okay. So we had discussed earlier in the meeting, are you, do I have a motion on this?
Move it, we approve.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And also item G, the Meadows Water Project Resolution, do I have a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. With that, before we adjourn, I just want to say, uh, if y'all would mind to keep our, one of our, uh, past commissioners in mind, uh, passed away this week, um, it was Commissioner, uh, Buddy Dunlap, if y'all would mind, keep him and the family in prayers there, and, uh, hope everyone has a blessed week, and with that, I'll, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Morris?
Shannon Shaver?
Has left this conference.
Ronnie Minden Hall?
Hi, Browder.
Has left this conference. Has left this conference. Has left this conference.
Kevin.